Good evening. I am Mayor Cecilia Taylor and welcome to the City Council's March 26th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment time may be limited. First, I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Jen Woolison, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, and City Council Member Maria Dorr are absent. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolte, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy. City Clerk Erin, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. And again, echoing a welcome to our March 26 regular City Council meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, if you are participating virtually, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. If you are participating in chambers, we'll have you complete a speaker card at that back table and you can return to me at the clerk's desk. I'd also like to remind folks that we are currently recruiting for all of our advisory bodies. Recruitment is running through tomorrow at 5:00 PM. If you're interested, please visit our website at memlopark.gov/commissions, or you can give us a call, (650) 330-6621. That includes my instructions and introductions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Item C, Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council members report. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items for discussion to be heard after the last regular business item G1? Does the City Council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? Moving on to Item D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. It is helpful but not required if you state your name and city of residence. The City Council cannot act on any item not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda Sections, Consent Calendar, Regular Business, or Informational Item. City Clerk Erin, please call for public comment. Please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Looks like we have one speaker. So our commenter is Jackie Sebrian.
Hi, City Council members. I am Jackie Sebrian, resident of Menlo Park and a member of the Complete Streets Commission, though I'm just making comments for myself. I just want to say thank you so much. I wrote a comment in last week to the City Council because of the persistent parking on the new bike lanes on Middle. And I have to say, like, this week and the rest of la-- I've had like four straight days of just smooth riding on that nice, safe bike lane corridor down Middle, and it's kind of delightful. So thank you so much for making it happen, and I just want to say, yeah, good job.
Thank you for your comment. Looks like we had one additional hand raise. Yvaine Young.
Hello. Um, yes, thank you. This is Yvaine Young. I was calling or joining as a representative of the San Mateo LGBTQIA+ Commission. So just wanted to introduce myself as I plan to join for, as the representative collaborating with Menlo Park going forward.
Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you for the public comments. Next item is Item E, Presentations and Proclaimations. We have one Certificate of Recognition presentation and one proclamation this evening. At this time, we will be recognizing Anika Basudo for her participation in the 2023 STEM Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. At this time, City Clerk Erin, do we have any public comment for Items E1? Or would you like me to?
We can take the public comment first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item E1, Certificate of Recognition for the 2023 STEM winner, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment for our Certificate of Recognition Item C1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the SCVSEFA Board Member Vina Jane up to accept the certificate.
Oh. I can come down to bring you the certificate.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and council members for recognizing this student. The student has not, is not here because she's a senior, she's already gone to college. So I apologize on that behalf. I'm a board member of the Synopsys Championship, or this is also called the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. We are in our 65th, 65th year, and it's amazing to see the work the students do. They work beyond their classroom. They work for six months on this project, and in March, we have a presentation in the Santa Clara, I'm sorry, San Jose Convention Center. And we are very fortunate to have such talented students and such dedicated teachers who support these students. So I want to thank you all for recognizing students from your community because what happens is, this is like a domino effect. If you recognize them, the students go home, they go to school, they talk about it, and people want to do more STEM activities. So I, on behalf of SCIPA, I want to thank you all.
Electrification and City Partners, Partnerships. Here to make the presentation is Caltrain Director, Strategy and Policy, Sam Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor. Hope you can hear me all right, but good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Sam Sargent. I serve as the Director of Strategy and Policy at Caltrain. I'm going to be presenting this evening, and I'm going to share my screen, so just bear with me one moment. And I'm going to provide an update on Caltrain Electrification, including testing, as well as city partnerships. But the focus will really be on the testing activities that we have underway right now. So as you are well aware, we are in the middle of a, well, not in the middle, we are towards the end of a transformative investment in this 160-plus-year-old rail corridor with Caltrain Electrification. We have completed 3,000 of these foundations, 2,500 poles, 10 traction facilities. I won't run through the entire list, but it is a lot of work, as you well know, and an enormous investment in the future of this corridor in the communities that we serve. We're currently energized between San Mateo and San Jose, so 15 miles of the corridor has now been energized, which is a really important milestone for Caltrain and the PSEP electrification team. And we've got eight of the electric vehicles that you can see here on my slide on property, and we're in the middle of testing these vehicles because they each need to get 1,000 miles under them, on the line, energized, electrified, before they can be put into revenue service, which will be in September. We've also been doing a lot of training with first responders, which is a huge part of this work, because we want to make sure that our local first responders, EMTs, firefighters, police officers, fully understand and go through the safety training that members of our staff, including myself, but especially our frontline employees, are going through to make sure that they stay safe under this new investment. So we'll have the full corridor energized in the coming weeks, which is another, again, big milestone. And we will continue to test these trains throughout 2024. We're expecting a soft launch in the summer of 2024, and then full passenger service in September, which is, again, very, very exciting after a decade plus of this project. We've had a lot of excitement, as you can imagine, a lot of electric train public tours in San Jose and San Francisco. We've had a couple of smaller events. And what I think is really exciting, having been up at MTC yesterday, is that because we have a finite amount of storage space, we've now pulled some of these electric trains into both Serodon in San Jose and into San Francisco. So even if you're not coming to an event, people are starting to see these, especially if you pull in on the train. And I think that there's a lot of excitement, a lot of buzz, and we've seen a lot of good social media activity. One that I really want to call your attention to and invite both the council and all members of the Menlo Park community to is on May 11th, we're going to be having our San Mateo County event in San Carlos, and this is on National Train Day, from 10:30 AM to 2:30 PM. Family-friendly event, be able to tour the new trains, see all of their amenities, top to bottom, and along with some food trucks and community booths. So it's a lot of fun for kids and kids at heart. So I'm sure that you're well aware, and you've probably seen slides like this over, for some time, about the benefits of this investment, but San Francisco to San Jose in under an hour, that's huge. Because when you think about ways that we can pull people back onto Caltrain as we work on our ridership and revenue recovery, you've got to find ways to make this time competitive. So quicker service, we will be able to save almost 30 minutes from the southern portion of Santa Clara County, but all of the trips that go through Menlo Park are also going to see time savings end to end. The customer experience, that's another huge part of how we draw people onto our service, both former customers, brand-new customers, and make sure that we're doing right by our continuing customers. So free Wi-Fi, smooth, quiet experience, outlets at every seat, digital trip information, spacious, accessible bathrooms with changing tables, and then all of the sustainability benefits of having an electrified service on our corridor. On our website, something that we have worked very hard with on our communications team, talented group, is to have city-specific fact sheets here at www.caltrain.com/servicebenefits. And we want to make sure that people can download this, access it on their phones, online, and really get a good sense, since we're only a couple of months out from revenue service, of what's in it for them. And that includes our fall electrified service plan, and you can see some of the details here on the diagram on the right. So not only are we going to see benefits on the weekdays, but we'll also be doubling the service on weekends. And weekends have been a real bright spot in terms of our recovery. While it's not as many people as a weekday is or was, we've still seen a lot of growth in that market. And I think when we get to 30-minute service, it's going to be so much easier for people to come to Menlo Park, out of Menlo Park, go to Giants games, go to Sharks games, whatever you might want to do, as well as getting to work, school, healthcare, et cetera. So again, the electrified service plan benefits, stops per weekday currently 77. With the new September 2024 service plan, there will be 90 trains per day stopping in Menlo Park, and the weekday stops per peak hour increasing from two to three. It may sound like a small number, but it's a very large increase during the rush hour, and then again, doubling the service on the weekends, which I think is going to be really So the testing. So right now, again, like I mentioned, the train sets that we get, so these are the seven-car, red and white, full electric vehicles, need to be tested for up to 1,000 miles on our track. We've got 23 of these total. We have four that have undergone all of their testing, and now that we have most of these trains on property, we need to really increase the amount of testing that we do, not only to test the vehicles, but to test the overhead wire technology. So the train testing is between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM most weeknights, one to two test trains every hour. You can see some of the schedule here. We'll begin doing full-line testing in April, so next month, right around the quarter. Residents might hear additional noise from horns, bells, crossing gates during these train movements, but I do think it's important to remember that with the way our current schedule is set up, we do tend to have equipment, trains moving on the line anytime between 4:00 AM and 2:00 AM, even though our schedule starts a little bit later and ends a little bit earlier than that. So we have a lot of overnight activity, but now it will be throughout the night for the evenings that we're doing this testing. So far, just anecdotally, but I think it's important, the city of Mountain View has had quite a bit of testing in their backyard. There are a lot of grade crossings there, as there are in Menlo Park, and so far, we've only had one community member complaint come through. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping our ears open, that you always know how to get ahold of Caltrain staff, and we're doing everything that we can to test these trains safely, as we're required to do, and make sure that we're not disruptive to folks' sleep. We're also working on a public outreach safety campaign, so making sure that people are aware both of the energized wires above, but also the thing that we are always trying to remind people of is to always expect a train cross only designated crossings. We have a couple of flyers here, one is on the right-of-way and one is a residential mailer, and we've been building out our caltrain.com/safety website. So if you ever need a resource for your community, for a school, for whoever it might be, we have resources, and if you can't find them there, you can always reach out to myself or one of my colleagues. And again, you can always learn more about this project, caltrain.com/electrification. You can sign up for email project updates at caltrain.com/getinvolved. And we, we've done a really great job, I think, of telling the story. There's a lot more stories to tell, a lot more events and celebrations to be had, and we really hope people will stay engaged with this process. That is my update on the electrification front. The only other thing that I'll note, just real quick, so I want to be mindful of our time, is that we've been working on a city partnership toolkit here, and we want to make sure that the cities in our corridor understand their role, both from a resident's but also a policymaker standpoint, in the future of this service. You know, Caltrain is the steward of this 160-year-old railroad, but it belongs to the people that we serve. And so we want to make sure that we deepen those partnerships to make sure that we can grow ridership and really give people a sense of ownership over their system. I won't get too deep into this, but we also have a significant financial challenge ahead of us, and we really need to do everything that we can to increase ridership on our corridor. And we know that the nature of work has changed for many people, but we still think that there are a lot of folks out there who can get a lot out of Caltrain, especially with the new system, on top of a lot of general interest once we get into electrification. But I'll probably close, because I don't want to belabor the point, with just saying, pre-pandemic, we were frankly the envy of the transit world by having a fare box recovery of 74%. That means that our revenue, our operating revenue, was 74% fares. Most places, that is far, far smaller because it's mainly made up of subsidy from sales tax, property tax, whatever it might be. We're now down to 30%. We were certainly saved by Measure RR. We are still working with our member agencies and our partners on capital projects and state of good repair, but we've got to find a way, mainly ridership, to get back on the right track. And you've probably heard of conversations around a regional revenue measure, but we still need to make sure that we can do everything that we can within our service area to increase awareness of Caltrain, a real sense of pride in Caltrain, and get our ridership trajectory back on track. So I'll pause there, but just know that that's an open invitation because we really want to deepen our relationships. Menlo Park is really at the forefront in a lot of ways because of our partnership on GoPass, now BayPass, which really puts the city in another level within the region. There's only, only three entities that are currently active Phase II BayPass members, and Menlo Park is one of them for your city employees. So we know that you've really leaned into Caltrain, and we're really grateful for that. So with that, I will pause and answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent, for the presentation. Now bring it back to the dais and see if there are any clarifying questions from City Council members before we take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. I'm on the local policymaker group for Caltrain, so I'm privy to some of this information. Going back to the testing that's going to be taking place, we're, you know, obviously very excited about the new electric trains and understand the need for the testing. Is there more inform-- you had referenced the testing kind of ramping up in April and maybe one to two trains coming per hour between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. Is there like a schedule that residents can access so they can kind of see that or that we can share with them?
It is being finalized. Right now, the testing tends to be a couple of nights a week, and so let me, let me get that for you. Let me get it back to council, the clerk. I've been working closely with Nick, and we will, I'll talk to the communications team to make sure that this is also added to those city-specific pages. So let me take that back as an action item as soon as that schedule is finalized.
Thank, I think that's going to be really important for our constituents. I represent the district completely along the Caltrain line, and horn noise is such an issue that we're pursuing a quiet zone. So those folks hearing the train horn again and again for a while, I'm not also clear how long, is that just in April or would that be ongoing until September? So any information where you can communicate what folks can expect would be really helpful. And then also, I might be moving away from questions, but while I have you right now, I know there have been complaints in the past, folks kind of laying on the horn when they're passing through, so just really passing along to the engineers, especially during that testing, to do the briefest honking or blasting that they can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation. I was wondering if you could share who the electricity provider will be for the electric
We are still finalizing our energy procurement right now. We're working with some of the clean energy providers. PG&E will play a very large role in that. During a recent board presentation, and I apologize for not having the information right in front of me, we presented to the Caltrain board on our strategic financial plan. A large part of that is our energy procurement, and Alex Burnett, who is our lead on that work, gave an update on how the negotiations have been doing with the, have been going with the energy providers. And I wish that I had included that in my slides, but we should have that wrapped in the next month or two, and I would also be happy to, I can provide an update, either the email to council through the city manager or staff, or we're always available to come back to present again. So I'm--
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there a commitment to use 100% carbon-free electricity?
We're, we're trying our best, but I don't have those details.
It would be great to have a commitment from Caltrain, especially as Caltrain is touting clean and green.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And at this time, Mr. Sargent, do you mind waiting until we take public comment, just in case any questions come up that the council would prefer you answer?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Erin, can you call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item E2, our presentation on Caltrain Electrification and City Partnerships, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This will be the final call for public comment on our presentation item E2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Erin, and thank you again, Mr. Sargent, for providing the presentation. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to the follow-up whenever time permits.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I will get on it. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Item F, Consent Calendar.
Mayor Taylor, pardon the interruption. Can we take a brief recess? I do need to just check our audio is going through.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and thank you very much for that brief recess. Having our city council back at our dais, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene in the meeting.
Thank you. Going on to our consent calendar, item F. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that the item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on our consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment, our consent calendar items, F1, city council meeting minutes; F2, an agreement to purchase library books and media; F3, awarding of a construction contract for the water main replacement project; F4, the annual city council and advisory body attendance report; F5, receiving and filing investment portfolio reports for September and December of 2023; or F6, consider and adopting of a resolution for the 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and Annual Successor Report. If you are participating remotely, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Seeing one commenter. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items F1 through F6. Okay, and our speaker will be Jenny Michelle. And Jenny, if you could let us know which item you are speaking on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Jenny Michelle, D3 resident. Personal comments on F6. My hat is off to staff. Your job is incredibly difficult, and there's no winning. You're constrained by state statute, committed to housing production. And then when you come to these diocese and reach out to the public, you're met with pushback mainly regarding vehicle storage and use. But you know that in San Mateo County in '23 alone, over 40 people died living on the streets. That's four sets of fingers. And then the county Board of Supervisors responded by applying criminalization or personal liability to being unhoused. How do you meet the city's mission statement in that dynamic? Providing for the needs of all residents in this setting. Well, I stand with you and look to ease your burden. The anemic 3.4 production numbers are under your watch, but you can't actually be responsible for the market headwinds. People like me, a licensed real estate salesperson, impact the market and said headwinds. So I take ownership and call me ass out. Local real estate agents and brokers have failed to meet the moment. We failed to disclose and engage our clients, you, in the realities of the housing crisis, defined as a time of intense difficulty, trouble, or danger. I know from my firsthand experiences over decades and from the public discourse, if y'all had been given proper disclosure, the dialogue would be different and the appetite intense to produce in our backyards. You heard it too, that many moved here to Menlo with the assumption from their agents that ownership included, one, unobstructed use by minors of the public infrastructure for private leisure activities, AKA kids playing in the street; two, neighboring parcel ownership rights into the airspace would not be exercised, AKA no apartment dwellings within a certain defined radius; and that, three, all residents are vehicle drivers or want-to-be, AKA no bus riders or slow transport users. Side note, State Senator Weiner's SB 961, vehicles speed limit capping legislation will address some of those safety concerns voiced. Could the city send a notice to all brokerages requesting to see a copy of their housing crisis disclosure form and ask that they declare how many clients sign that doc? Like the disclosure idea for renters from Ms. Jones, the city could fill the Delta Void left by us agents and disclose the housing crisis and implications to homeowners, correct? Because the owners, AKA stakeholders, not understanding the impacts of the housing crisis on their interests is creating a host of problems. We've got to step in and step up because I see liability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And are there any questions from council members? If not, I'll take a motion. I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Nash and a second by city council member Woolison to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs and city council member Dower absent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is item F, Regular Business. Under Regular Business, the city council considers recommendation from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is item G1, Approve Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Budget Principles. Here to introduce these items are the Administrative Services Director, Brittany Mello.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We're here to present the proposed fiscal year 24/25 budget principles for your feedback and approval as we are starting the fiscal year budget development process. And here making the presentation will be our Assistant Administrative Services Director, Jared Hanson. And it'll be just a moment as we are working to share our screen.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Excited to be here and to present the fiscal year 24/25 budget principles for your consideration. Our agenda day, we're going to go over the budget principles that were developed last year with some suggestions that we have this year. We're going to talk about the budget development calendar and the outline of what we got, and then look for city council's approval and direction on the next steps. So the first thing they want to go over is the proposed budget principles for fiscal 24/25. These are foundational budget principles and values that guide us in the development of the budget process. And there's three main areas. We'll go over each of those and then talk about all the items underneath them. The first one is to promote the city's long-term fiscal sustainability. Second one is to provide city services and infrastructure that contribute to quality of life in Menlo Park. And the third one is revenue sources and grant accounting. Underneath the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, there are a number of principles here. The first one is to implement the annual payment necessary in the budget to achieve the amortization of the Calper's net pension liability in accordance with the actuarial 15-year amortization schedule. And this is consistent with the city council's previously adopted budget principle to plan for that accelerated reduction of the unfunded accrued liability. The second one, invest in technologies that minimize low-value ad processes, increase transparency and communication, and most effectively utilize our talented staff. Third one, strive to achieve city council cost recovery goals for fee-based services. Continue to evaluate the most cost-effective method to provide services at a specified level that provides the city with flexibility in all economic conditions, including the use of contracted services, shared services, and regular and limited-term employees. Next principle, proactively manage the loss of institutional knowledge by documenting procedures, practices, and processes, and succession planning efforts, including the ability to provide for overlap in critical positions at the discretion of the city manager. Incorporate the programs and initiatives that strengthen Menlo Park's standing as an employer of choice to retain highly qualified personnel. And this, I think, add one additional item to this area, and that's to evaluate the long-term structural balance of revenues and expenditures to maintain a suitable, or sustainable, excuse me, a sustainable general fund. The second principle on providing the city services and infrastructure for quality of life, deal with implementing ordinances and city council adopted initiatives and strategies that contribute to the quality of life in Menlo Park now and in the future. Proactively maintain and improve existing infrastructure to minimize maintenance costs, decrease the city's greenhouse gas emissions, and increase the city's long-term disaster and climate resilience. Strive to balance the resources and requirements of each area of the city in an equitable manner through the use of equitable tools. Evaluate one-time revenues for highest and best investment, recognizing the benefit of leveraging near-term investments for long-term gains in financial sustainability and/or quality of life. And commit to continuous improvement in the communication of city financial information through a variety of media, acknowledging that the city's professional staff and consultants are obligated to conform to accounting and reporting standards in order to provide balanced financial information that informs policymakers. The third area is in the revenue and grant accounting. And this is to state the fund's surplus or deficit balance to show annual results and the use of fund balance. Identify the revenue sources for initial year of all capital projects and ensure a fund's fiscal year-end balance estimate is positive. And what we're recommending again this year is adding one additional item, and that's in that first budget principle, where we're going to evaluate the long-term structural balance of the revenues and expenditures to maintain the sustainable general fund. The rest of the budget principles that were identified are the same as what you had last year with the changes that you had, that council had adopted last year as well. As far as the budget development calendar goes, today's March 26th, so we're here to review and approve the budget principles and talk about those. Next up on the list is going to be an update on the capital improvement plan. That's scheduled currently for April 16th. City council will review a workshop on the final report. Their city council workshop final report review will be presenting a general fund five-year forecast, opening up the budget portal, doing the public workshop. And then, as we get into the June timeframe, the public hearing and budget adoption. So at this time, we're asking council to approve the fiscal year 24/25 budget principles. And we went over the budget calendar. And that's kind of where we're at. And I have the document pulled up. If council has any changes or things that they would like on any of these principles, we can make those changes at this time.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G1, Approve Fiscal Year 2024/25 Budget Principles, if you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Currently have one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G1. All right, and our speaker will be Adina Levin.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And having looked at the staff report, the various different budget principles overall looked good, but there was something that seemed like potentially a gap. The, later this evening, there's a report out on the city council priority setting. And the city council has a number of priorities, including climate, and that climate includes adaptation and resilience, which dovetails with the environmental justice element that the city is working on. Also mentioned housing, and a big portion of that is going to be implementing the recently approved housing element. And those are some really priorities requiring robust actions and potential investments. And it would be useful for there to be to a clear planning process such that for the council's identified priorities, that there is a plan going forward in the budget to pay for, whether it be with local funding. And also, there are potential funding sources that are, you know, grant sources at the county and regional and state and federal level. But, you know, making sure that there is a plan to address those city priorities. Because like, there's a principle about the long-term financial stability, but it would be helpful to be really clear that there are plans to match up those priorities. For the housing element, the housing element is approved, so it should be clear, you know, what those expenditures are. The environmental justice element and safety element are not done, but maybe there can be a planning process identified so that the city council can take financial responsibility for identifying the funding sources to address the city council's top priorities. And that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comments. Are there any questions from city council members? Do you have a comment? Okay, council member Woolison.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and thank you to all of us for having good budget principles in years past because I think for the most part, they're looking really good. I just wanted to elevate the comment by Ms. Levin about tying our budget to our priorities. And actually, City Clerk Heron, can you please put on the screen? I'd actually tried out a wording of a new budget principle to kind of address the comment that was made. So this is totally open for editing, but it would kind of live, I think, under that second bucket. And it would be something like strategically align and identify financial resources to implement the city council identified top goals. Totally open for wordsmithing. I know Ms. Levin in her comment talked about, how did she phrase it? A planning process to make sure there's funding. So if anyone, or I would also open it up to staff if they have suggestions based on the public comment. But first, I wanted to see if there was support for this type of thing. And this is my only adjustment to the principles I have.
So I was also wondering about that Mr. McKenna sent in an email to CCIN about priority-based budgeting. And I was just wondering if perhaps staff could reflect how priorities are reflected in the budget as it stands and whether or not we need an additional budget principle.
One way that priorities are reflected in the budget is the development of the citywide work plan. And that clearly lays out budgeted items by top city council goal. So that's So that's probably our top document, but then again, our budget itself, and I would defer to finance staff if there's anything else they want to add to that.
I would add that when the capital improvement plan is brought to the city council to review, that prioritization is a key factor every time that's reviewed.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash.
Just to comment that some of our priorities are not capital projects.
Yes, point well taken. I think for the operating budget that is brought to the council, and we receive council feedback at the public hearing when it's first brought, so that's scheduled for June 11th. And then we would incorporate your feedback and any prioritization at that time to help ensure that those priorities are reflected in the budget adoption for June 27th. Or 25th, my apologies.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Councilmember Nash, did you have one to add something? Councilmember Woolison?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to direct to staff or ask staff, because I had talked to Mr. Stoltay ahead of the meeting. Kind of hearing what Ms. Levin said and the sentence I put together, would that change anything in how staff implements the development of the budget or organizes information for the public based on our priorities? Kind of given what you're hearing from Mr. McKenna and Ms. Levin and what we're saying of kind of a stronger emphasis, or are we just saying something that's already being done and that you are already addressing in a different way?
I would say that adding it to the budget principle would help us continue to build out our communications around top city council goals. This is our second year of establishing those high-level goals. And so I think we're continuing to build out our website and other ways that we can highlight goals and staff reports, documents, the budget, the work plan. So I do think it would be helpful to staff.
Thank you, and I agree. I think it's like moving to a more strategic direction for the city and helping to communicate that. But again, totally open to the wording of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Woolison. I am actually supportive of it. Councilmember Nash?
I would look to staff for the wording, whether it's goals or priorities or how it should be described.
I think either goals or priorities provides the direction that we need to help guide us in the budget development process, so however the council prefers.
I believe that there is another bullet that mentions priorities in this section. I think top identified council goals here makes sense because we do have the goal-setting workshops, so it links it to the workshop a little more clearly in this bullet.
We're all agreed on adding that to the, to our principles. And I have a question, and that has number two C. And that is to strive to balance the resources and requirements of each area of the city in an equitable manner through the use of equitable tools. And I know that the city staff, primarily the city manager and assistant city manager, has been working with the county. And I wanted to find out if there are any recommendations from staff that can strengthen that sentence or provide a little more clarity?
Maybe I can jump in. My understanding is that part of the county's framework is providing different forms of analysis, questions that you can ask as you work to apply it to different areas. So I think the way I read that is, you know, through the use of equitable tools, I would say that the county toolkit is one of those tools that we would be using as we're able to learn more about it and implement it kind of on an iterative basis as we're learning more as we go.
I think just for the public that it needs to be a little more clear. And I don't think the public knows that the city staff has been working with the county directly or the work that the county is doing specifically. So if folks were familiar with it, then that would be fine, since they're not, and the city council isn't either, think that there needs to be more clarity to the language there. So I'm not sure if we have to provide that this evening or if that, since we do have two council members that are not here, if there's opportunity as we move along with the budgeting process to make some changes to the principles.
One suggestion, perhaps in text, that we could add to the end of that bullet is so through the use of equitable tools and ongoing collaboration with the Countywide Equity Working Group.
That works for me. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, I'm definitely in support.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltay.
Assistant City Manager, can you just repeat that so I can make sure I'm reflecting it in the minutes? Thank you.
So the additional text would be and ongoing collaboration with the Countywide Equity Working Group.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other questions or additions that city council members would like to make to the budgeting principles? So at this time, I believe the next step, Ms. Heron, is for us to make a motion.
Yes, give me just a moment here, Mayor Taylor, just so I can update the motion to include these two new edits. Thank you. Okay, I think just about there. Okay, so I would be ready for a motion in a second at this point. Thank you for your patience.
I move to approve the budget principles, including the two changes, one being an addition related to top council goals and amendment adding on that we're collaborating with the county on the equity initiative.
I second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Woolison and a second by City Councilmember Nash to approve budget principles for fiscal year 202425 with the addition of, under Provide City Services and Infrastructure item that we add strategically align and identify financial resources to implement city council identified top goals, and then updating under number two as well, Item C, to incorporate ongoing collaboration with the Countywide Equity Working Group. Yes.
Two things. One, now that I am hearing it, can we swap the words identify and align? So we identify and align. Right now, it's saying align and identify resources, but I feel like you first have to identify the resources and then align them. So just grammatically, I think that sounds, there's support for that? Okay, there's support for that. And then I just want to clarify also that the intention of my motion was to include staff's recommendation of the addition that they had included, which was related to the structural, the long-term structural balance, a long-term structural balance of revenues. So just wanted to confirm. Does that work with everyone up here? Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you, City Councilmember Woolison. Okay, any further city council question or discussion? All right, if you could, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs and City Councilmember Dower absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mello and Mr. Hanson. Moving to our next agenda item is Item H, informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. At this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, H1, City Council Agenda Topics, H2, Transmittal of City Attorney Billing, or H3, the City Council Goal Setting Workshop Update. If participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. This is the final call for public comment on our informational items, H1 through H3. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any questions or comments from city council members on the agenda item? Moving to City Manager's report. To introduce this item is our city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to highlight a few things. One is to recognize the major milestone that the city accomplished last week related to the housing element of the general plan being certified by the state of California's Housing and Community Development Department. So I just want to, again, recognize all the work by staff, the council, and the community over the past few years in achieving that accomplishment. So as was referenced earlier this evening, there's still a lot of work to be done on the implementation, but it's good to recognize that milestone. Second, there's, tomorrow is the deadline for recruit applications for the city's commissions. It's five o'clock tomorrow, so there's been a lot of advertisement of those openings. So we encourage people to go ahead and submit their application by tomorrow at five o'clock. Next, on Thursday, there's a second of two meetings related to the Middle Avenue Complete Streets project. The first meeting was a virtual meeting. The second meeting is in-person. Thursday, March 28th, 6:30 at Nealon Park. There is the potential for some wet weather. I think the last time the community meeting was held at the park, a few years ago, there was some wet weather, so we will have some tents set up if needed. And the last thing I'd identify this evening is on Saturday, March 30th, is the egg hunt at Burgess Park Field. And it's being hosted by the Menlo Park Firefighters Association. So feel free to bring your own basket and get ready to collect eggs during the event. There'll be games, food trucks, bunny photos, balloon animals, and fire engine rides. So that's the Saturday, March 30th, from 10 to 1. So there's just a few items I wanted to report on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The next item is Item J, City Councilmember Reports. Are there any report outs from city council members since our March 12th city council meeting? All right, and the next item on our agenda is Item K, which is adjournment. Thank you.